Okay, it's five o'clock. Call the township planning meeting to order. Roll call. Jane McGinnis. Dawn Webb. Mike Sherman here. John Shams here. Kelly Heschford is here.
Here.
Bob Kramer is here. And absent is Lisa Schofield for now. So, okay. First thing on is board comments on the agenda. Does anybody have any comments about the agenda that we're going through tonight? Okay. Public comments on the agenda. Does anybody have any public comments on the agenda?
Are there any other? There's another?
Well, at the end, you can, there's a public comment. This is basically a public comment on the agenda itself if you have anything about it. Okay. Okay, the first thing that we want to do is approve our April 27th meeting minutes. We have to approve those, so if anybody, hopefully everybody's reviewed them. If there's any discussion on it, let me know. If there's not, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the 27th of September. That's when we did the final CIP.
All second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Okay. Okay, so we approved the minutes from April 27th. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is that from NIMCOG we were given the goals and objectives for the master plan. It's like 18 pages or 16 pages of it. A lot of this is we're already doing. I don't know if, Bob, if you look at it, there's a lot of stuff that's already done through the...
Yeah, I compared it to last time, too.
Yeah, so hopefully we get through this quickly. We have two hours. So, do you want to start, Doug?
Well, the main thing...
Introduce yourself to us, would you please?
I'm Doug Baum, I'm the CEO at NIMCOG, standing in for Denise. And actually Nico is going to probably be working on this because we have her on some other projects that are needing her attention.
Okay.
So, but we had multiple meetings, so we kind of split up. And I came this way, Nico went to Alpena tonight.
Okay.
So, I'm a newbie at NIMCOG. Obviously, you're all familiar with Diane Rakowski. I took over for Diane.
Right.
So, I am not...
She was here.
Yeah. I'm not a planner, but I've been through this process. So, I actually came from the city of Grayling. I was a city manager there, and we went through the planning process and did the master plan, worked with NIMCOG, so pretty familiar with the process. But the one thing that Denise wanted me to remind you is that in this chapter six, the wording in red is just suggested wording, wording that we have used in other similar communities. So, obviously, that's just there for discussion, if it's something that you're interested in, or if you're not, if you're not comfortable with that wording. I mean, it's up to you what you want in your master plan. So, but she wanted to at least give you something to start with.
Okay, so the process basically is each line item, we go, we look at them, and we decide whether it's, what timeframe we want to do some of these items in, if we do want to do them. And then who's, when we assign somebody, responsible party, like whether it's the planning commission, whether it's the DDA, the township board, or Parks Commission. Is that what, okay.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Can you say that again about what was in red? Because I got my phone, so I can see the colors. It's black and white.
Oh, okay. So, the red is just suggested wording. And the idea, so if you look under like Objective C, Implementation Strategies, so this is suggested wording, this is wording that we've used in other plans. It's basically there to give you something to start from, some idea to, what to start with for wording in those areas. That way, we didn't give you just a blank slate, and you're going, what do we do here? So, the whole idea was to give you, at least starting out with some ideas.
So, the objective of this, once we get through it, then you compile it all and put it, that would be the goals and objectives for the master plan, is that what we're...
Yeah.
Once we go through this and...
So, you go through this, you document the changes, or the additions, or whatever you want in this document.
Okay.
And then we make those changes for you, and give you a clean draft to bring back, and then you can approve that final draft as part of, at least for this chapter.
Okay.
Hopefully, that makes sense.
What's the next step after this, then, for the final review?
So, well, so you have to go through each of your chapters. Once we give the, we do the drafts on each chapter, obviously, you, I don't know if you've done your public comment, you'll probably have a public comment phase to this.
Yep.
And after public comment, I believe it should be going to the township board also. And then for, it goes for the final adoption.
So, that's, that would be the compiling of the final master plan that we would review with public comment and the board before it gets, then it has to go out and has to be sent to different townships in the county before we can finalize it, right?
They will have a review period, a comment period.
Right, so it'll take some time after that, so...
Usually, it has a 60-day copy.
So, between the time we get through this chapter six and give you the data, it's, what, two or three months before we get the final copy of it? Because we had a timeframe that Denise had given us when we first started, and I can't remember how long that was.
It's, it's here on the contract.
Yeah, I just...
Yeah, it tells, on the contract, it tells, I think this is what you're talking about.
Yeah.
So, we're in the plan development phase now, and it talks about the different chapters, right? So, we have one, the introduction, two is socioeconomic characteristics, we've already gone through that, community facilities, who is three, and we did that last month, four is natural resources. We answered some questions, but we haven't reviewed it here. So, we still have to do that. Five, existing land use and land cover. We haven't done that. I don't think, I haven't seen chapter five yet. And six is goal and objectives, and then seven, future land use, eight, implementation and adoption. And then the master plan approval process is outlined here, and it's when there's one, two, three, I think there's five steps, it looks like, five steps.
So, when are we, when are we going to get the other parts of it, I guess?
We've gotten the natural resource.
Huh?
We've gotten the chapter on natural resources.
So, we went through that.
We have that, but we have not, as a board, gone through it, no.
No, we had to get some, we had to get an updated...
Oh, that's right, we had to...
Right, there was some questions.
Things that we had to get updated.
So, we need to meet...
And we answered. Remember, was that the one that we answered, the questions?
No, that was the community.
Okay.
That was chapter three.
Yeah, we did, we did this one.
The natural resources is the one that has the graphs in it about the bird lake and water quality and all the resources.
That's right.
She sent it to us for review. We've kind of, you know, gotten email.
Yeah, you sent it, you sent it to BLPA, right?
And I, and I sent it to BLPA to see if they had any updated information on the graphs.
Okay.
For the water quality, because they do all that testing. I've got some information back from them, but we, as a board, have not sat down with you.
So, we'll need to meet again to go through the other stuff.
We have not gone through it, as a board, no.
Okay, all right, all right. Okay, so, but then, once we go through that, and we give them chapter six, then the next step will get...
Then we have two more chapters. We have seven and eight, which is future land use and implementation and adoption. So, I think, I think that's the only ones that we have left.
When we get to future land use, I, I remember 10 years ago, Kelly, when we went through that, we went through each one with our coordinator.
Existing land use.
You know, the land use, what we feel and what the future was going to be.
I was thinking of five either, existing land, land use. We haven't gotten that one yet either. She didn't, she told us that she didn't, she doesn't do them necessarily in order, because there are some things that are really quick to do, we can get through, and some things that take a little bit longer for her, for them to work through.
So...
But as a board, we can review the ones that we've gotten and haven't gone through, like the natural resources.
Yeah, well, that's...
But that's not on today's agenda.
No, that's chapter six, because that's what Denise was going to go through with us. Okay. We still need to go through the land use and the, okay. I'll have to get a meeting going for that one before we get the rest of this.
Yep.
Okay. So, do we go through each line, or do we look at...
Normally, you would review each line as far as the purpose of the input. Obviously, these are the results from your surveys, so if you, you know, one of those things that you want to go through line by line, or if you want to just hit any highlights or any concerns or thoughts that anyone has.
Well, we had, you know, we had gone through the survey. We had a public comments with it, and Donna put together a...
Just like a summary.
Summary, and it summarized everything, and we've gone through it. And this is, you know, this is another summary here, the same thing we went through.
Same thing.
So, basically, the way I look at it, the some, the survey is just another avenue to look at when, you know, when we're looking at the goals and objectives, whether it's something we feel we should do. And one thing I've looked at is...
So, these suggested goals that Denise put together, those were derived from our survey?
So, those were derived from multiple sources. Some of them are literally nothing you have to do with this township, but they're items that we have used in other master plans, and they're there for discussion. If it's a goal that you, that's of interest to you, you can tweak it, you can use it, you can take it out. Literally, they're there for discussion.
Okay.
To give you an idea of what to do with each one of these.
But some of the goals are coming from our survey that was done then, too?
Yes, that's the way I understand it, yes.
So, when we go through all these, some of the goals in here were taken from the survey, too, then?
That's the way I understand it.
I'm very concerned about that. Very concerned. Is it unusual to have a survey as part of a 10-year plan? This is only my second master plan, so...
So, any of the plans that I'm familiar with have always used the survey. That's what the survey is for, is to give you direction on what you, what your community is looking for you as, as this body to, to plan for.
So, here's my concerns. And you all know that I'm concerned about it. First of all, the survey's a great idea, but there are so many things in here that have absolutely nothing to do with land use, our master plan. So, I don't even know why we're addressing it. Second of all, the survey in and by itself was extremely unscientific. It was not statistically valid at all. The questions weren't tested. It wasn't, there was no random sample, there was no random sample by demographics. We should have had it further broken down by what, not just everybody said, but what the residents said versus what everybody else said. So, there should have been three tables. To give you an example, I know many people, not many, two or three people, that told me they'd filled out the survey two or three times. And then I read some stuff about airport use, where I think 11 or 14 percent of the people that answered the survey used the airport. And I was like, well, wait a minute, we only have 11 hangar owners. How do we have 44 people use the airport that took the survey? I mean, those are just some of the examples. So, I'm very, very concerned that we're making decisions on what I would consider faulty data. Maybe you can flush it out, maybe you, maybe you can refine it a little bit, but I'm just very concerned about it. And, you know, I used to do surveys, and some of those questions are very misleading. But aside from all that, I mean, surveys are great, but if we're going to make decisions only on this survey, that's a real problem for me.
Bob, and under respect, we are not making decisions only on the survey. We look at it, yeah, we look at it from a, you know, a standpoint, there may be some stuff in there we may want to look at. We know there's things like short-term rentals. We know things like, you and I talked about housing, you know, housing, those are two things. We talked about blight and a few other things that's in here. These are things you don't need a survey to even talk about, but that survey just confirmed some of that stuff.
Exactly.
And all that other crap that's in there sometime, we don't, you know, we won't use it. There's a lot of stuff in there about different things. But to me, the main things are the, you know, the short-term rentals, that's what a big thing that people have said. The housing thing, you know, we want, they support tiny homes, they support improving the downtown Indian River, which we all want to see. 81 percent of the people that took the survey, whether it's part of the township people or not, but, you know, everybody wants to see that. And plus, 84 percent of the people that took the survey have homes or have property in Tuscaraway Township. So, most of the people that took it, and we had over 400 and some people took that survey, and Denise thought that was more than normal for sampling. So, and we don't look at this verbatim, Bob, and we won't look at it verbatim. So, I, your point is well taken, okay?
I think we should, I think it should...
The other thing is Doug just said that the goals that they put here are suggested goals, and they're based on the survey, but they're also based on other goals and things that other townships and other master plans have used. So, the, the goals are not based solely on the survey. They're, we're taking a number of things into account. And we have a chance to go through and look at these goals and see if they fit with, you know, with what everyone's concerned on.
But I guess my one suggestion is, if it's not related to the land use, take it out of there.
Um, wow, so, are this, this is a master plan.
There's more than just land use in a master plan.
I understand.
Okay, so why, why would we need to take out some other things?
If it's not related to the master plan, it really shouldn't be in there.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think some of those questions have anything to do with it.
But the master plan is not just land use.
I understand that. It's also business development and some other stuff.
Right, so not just that, it also, it satisfies, so if you look at the law, the Master Plan Adoption Amendment and Implementation by Local Government and Purpose, it tells you under 125 dot 3807, section seven, two, it satisfies all of these following criteria, and, and C is, will, in accordance with present and future needs, best promote public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, and general welfare. I mean, this is a master plan. It's the direction this wants to go into. This is in the law.
I know what a master plan is.
Well, then, why would we take any of that out?
Is your position that...
I'm just saying, I, I, no, I'm just saying that we should scrutinize these questions, make sure they're related.
Right.
If they're not related, get them out of there. And I think you also ought to, uh, uh, I think you also should make another run of the difference between all of the questions and then those that are residents that said that, I think it was a question that said, are you a resident? Correct, as I recall?
Yeah, well, it said basically, did you own property with it?
It also...
And there's an issue there, too, because half the people that are, there's so many issues.
The survey is a tool that we're going to use to figure out what we want in the master plan. The survey is not really a part of the master plan. It was to get ideas for where, where we want to go for the next 10 years, okay? Do you see what I'm saying? I mean, this is, the survey is just for us to see what the people of the township and the people who use our services, it's not just for the landowners, it's for the, the planning board itself to work on these questions.
And there's people...
And what, what needs to be solved in the next 10 years.
Okay.
We ran through, we're at it. We ran through these questions. The very first question, please indicate your residency status. 41.7 percent were year-round residents, 45.4 percent are seasonal residents, and 12.8 percent non-resident.
So, what I'm saying is, there's no such thing as not having enough data. I'd like to see the entire survey broken down by those three categories.
You had it. So, I, so I, I put that information, that information is in that, in that survey.
We went through the survey. She had everything broken down by, each question, too, was by if you're a full-time resident, part-time resident.
Okay, so...
So, second question, please indicate your property interest in Tuscaraway Township. Mark all that applied. 46.3 percent own a home. 38 percent own a home but don't live here.
And that doesn't mean they don't vote here either.
No, it does not mean they don't...
They could vote here, too, and they live someplace else.
What I'm asking is, for each one of these questions, I'd like to see, this is just me, I'd like, let's take this question, 70 percent feel the township should be promoting recreation and tourism.
They already do that, so that's something we wouldn't look at.
Right, so, so, of that 70 percent, how many, how many of them were full-time residents, and how many of them are seasonal?
She's got that information.
It, it's in the, it's in, it's in the raw data. I'm not looking at, we did not break it down.
I was here for that, and I remember that breakdown.
Yeah.
No, because we didn't break down, I, all I did was summarize based on the question.
But in the package you got, each board member got the detail, because Denise said...
We got the detail.
We gave you the detail behind each, I sent that to you, too, that gave you the detail behind each question. We, when we did the summary, we didn't show that, because that would have taken all night. There was 100 and some pages, so...
So, we do all and review it.
80 pages long.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it was like 180 pages long. All I did was go through and summarize it, put it on a slide, one slide per question.
Yeah, I saw that.
And summarize it. So, you know, so you're, what three things do you like the most about Tuscaraway Township? Okay, 242 people said they liked the water, beaches, water, the waterways, lakes, rivers, hunting, fishing.
Most of these questions are obvious, too. I mean, there's not like, you know, there's a lot of things. Like I said, there are four or five items that stuck out that, you know, we need to take a look at, whether we do or not. Like the blight, there's a percentage of people with blight, but most of the stuff we already know about.
So, can I ask you another question?
Sure.
Have you talked to the county at all about our interest in tiny homes? Have you gotten any, has anybody gotten any...
Yes, I talked to Mike Turris about it, and they were looking into it. It's something that Emma County has that ordinance. And again, the county told me they were looking into it, whether...
Is that good or bad?
I don't know.
That makes me nervous if they tell us no.
I, I talked to Mike Turris also about that.
Yeah, what'd he say?
Maybe a year ago, and he said that they had surveyed, or they had gone out, and there wasn't much interest in it at that point, but he could see things were changing, and that they would probably readdress it at some point in time.
And that's all we got from him.
But right now, we, we and Tuscaraway Township are bound by their zoning.
But they live by our...
Tiny houses. They allow guest houses, they allow cabins, they allow hunting lodges, but, you know, as far as a, a tiny house, you have to have at least 720 square feet, I believe.
Right, that says right.
Is the minimum.
Yeah. Yeah, so there, you know, again, if we put something like that on our master plan, they use our master plan when they develop the county master plan, and use it.
He, he actually has this survey. He has all the raw data. I sent it to him. He asked for, he was here when we went through the survey.
Yeah, he was here when we did the review.
Have you talked to any of the planning commissioners about tiny homes at all?
Have I, no.
No, I haven't talked to them. I've gone through Mike, you know, on that, but again, that's something that...
I'm just surprised we don't have any support. We haven't got that stuff.
Well, I am, too. I mean, that's something that we need to do, but... Excuse me? No citizens come in here.
Okay.
We need to, yeah, I guess we need to go, but Bob, just to finish up on this, this is just the tool. The survey is, we're not going to look at it verbatim and take everything what people said on there. We're going to, as a group, we're going to decide, and you're part of the group, whether we, when we go through these questions, whether it's something we want to look through, or we want to, you know, we're already, a lot of stuff we're already doing, then who's the responsible party on some of these goals? So, and we got an hour and a half now to, to get through that.
I'm a little concerned about the questioning on the survey, because I thought it was a very well done.
All right, okay.
I've done surveys, too, so I thought it was very well done.
Okay, but again...
I mean, the rest of it was really, really good.
There's 400 and some people took the survey. For Denise, that was a good sample, so...
And as far as taking it more than one time, when, when Denise first put the survey together, she sent a demo, she sent us the link as the board, so we could go out and take the survey, see how the questions were, see how long it took. And I did that, and other members did.
I did, too.
When the survey was finalized and put out there for people to go to, I went back to it.
Couldn't get it.
I knew it.
So, there may be some...
Jane, what'd you say?
It said, you've already taken the survey, you cannot take it again. So, unless you create...
Unless you have a VPN, that's how they get you.
Well, I don't, if somebody wants to go that far, then that's, but, okay.
All right, so I don't think there were a lot of people taking it multiple times.
Why don't we continue on what we're here for?
That's what we're going to do. We're setting the ground rules here.
All right.
Okay, so we're going to read each one of these things, I'll take it and go through it all. And some of it, we may want to skip over in some way, but the first item is pursue the establishment of downtown Indian River. We have a mixed village, we don't need to do that, we're done with that.
Where are you at? What, where is your...
It's on page 65.
First page, page 65, that's the first page.
Six five, okay.
And is that the implementation?
Implementation strategy.
Number one.
We already have a village center.
Yeah.
Let's see, I want to see what you said.
All right. So, the first goal was maintain, and we're okay with that.
So, the sec number two, review the county zoning ordinance related to the master plan and work cooperative, and we do that, too. So, I don't think we need to do any more in that one. Encourage development of cluster commercial, light industrial, we do that.
That's in the old master plan.
That's in the old master plan.
Okay, can we go back to number two, we reviewed the zoning ordinance? That was one of the things that Denise said, that this is where the RRC was going, needed to jive with the master plan. She was going to review, review the zoning ordinance, and then set up a meeting with whoever's doing the RRC, set up a meeting with the county zoning, so if there needed to be any tweaks to the county zoning and our master plan to make sure that we could hit RRC, right?
Correct.
Yes.
It's an RRC and all in the league now.
No, no.
Well, unless they're not going to do it, I can't imagine nobody's going to do it.
No, that's, that was, that was approved in the budget the other night. We put eight, Bob put $8,000 in his...
County commission budget.
No, no, it's in the supervisor's budget. You were here that night. We put it in the supervisor's budget, so it's covered.
So, that one...
It's covered, the amount of money is covered, so...
So, I think the responsible party on that is going to be, what, you, Bob?
Well, it's going to be the township board.
What's that?
Board of...
Yeah, township board.
Township township board.
Yeah.
Township board of the side head.
Also, Bob...
We want to wait till we get a full board, I think, as well.
Yeah, Mike has given me all...
Mike's going to help us.
Yeah, he gave me everything today that he wanted you to review from the RRC. He also, well, I'll talk to you later about it, but he also volunteered some time, so...
Yeah, Mike's going to help us, that's important.
Yes, so...
No, no sense in me and that...
No, so Mike did tell me today, he's going to work with Bob on this thing, so, okay.
Because we're going to put it...
All right.
So, so I'm going to mark these up.
All right, you mark them up, that's good.
Wait a minute, so for, number five, so for number two, I'm going to put timeframe TBD and township board.
So, you've got a little, huh?
For, um, number two, I'm going to put timeframe TBD and township board is the responsible part. You guys are going to decide.
That's the ordinance.
Yes.
And number, number two about the R...
Review the county... Can you just reach out to the board again?
The township board, that's the RRC.
That's the RRC.
Working with the county and Denise, or whatever, here.
Okay.
Okay, encourage development, cluster commercial, I think we do do that now, so I think that's something we don't need to put a timeframe on. Provide industrial industry at locations as easy accessible as...
Commerce Park.
We pretty much do that. A lot of this stuff, okay. Limit commercial thoroughfare, affairs, frontage development, the streets highway for auto orientation type businesses, other businesses uses for large or otherwise unsuited location of downtown. I think that's something that the township board has looked at, and we're pretty much doing that right now, especially with Commerce Park.
The DDA's in, a lot of this, too, right?
Yeah. So, do we want to put a responsible party, like the DDA, for limit...
Well, they are involved, I mean...
Yeah.
Especially about this number five.
Yeah, so we'll put...
Is that the DDA?
Yeah, I think it is, because when Mike was on the DDA, that's one thing that they, yeah, you're right, that's DDA. Okay, Dawn?
I mean, aren't they involved in like two, three, four, and five altogether? One through five, all?
Not, not two.
Well, they're involved with the, uh...
Right, not, they're involved, number one, right?
Three, four, and five, yes.
And they're involved in downtown.
We've already have number one, we already have the mixed-use village center, that's already an ordinance through the county, so...
Okay.
Uh, but we could put, you know, three and four, we could put DDA and TBD. Okay. Uh, but we could put, you know, three and four, we could put DDA and TBD, okay. Okay, all right, so then, objective B. Consistent with smart growth, this is sound principles for planning and zoning in the township, consistent, we don't do zoning, so.
So they scratched that off. She crossed that out, 'cause that was.
Oh, okay.
You still talk to the county about zoning?
Yeah, yeah, so we don't, so that's not one we would do.
Yeah, she only crossed out the rest of the.
Yeah, she crossed it out, because that was part of the smart growth.
So we don't have to look at B then, it's pretty much crossed out, okay.
Can I ask Doug a question?
Sure.
Doug, do you have any experience with PUDs?
Uh, we did that in Grayling, where I was at before.
Did it work well?
Yes. You were talking about the tiny home development, we did a tiny home.
Any PUD?
Right.
Because in Shaboygan County, you only have to have five acres for a PUD, I found that fascinating, usually they want, you know, most counties want far more.
We're actually using city lots for PUDs with the tiny home development.
So, if we can get tiny homes, a PUD would probably be perfect for that, is that what I hear you saying? Wow, and, and when did Grayly do this?
Uh, well, they're still, I think they've got a first, three units that were built, and I think there was.
Oh, it's new.
They're finishing the, the last two units, so that's been, actually, it started a couple of years ago, but it took a little while to get going.
Do you have any idea what, what, like, a tiny home would cost on a PUD?
I don't remember.
Under two hundred, you think?
I don't know.
Be interesting.
Okay, so we're, we're in, uh, objective C, develop and complete streets, plan for the township, create a walkable community throughout implementation of sidewalks and/or pedestrian bicycle pathways, visual elements, destination points, coordinators, improvements.
We missed, we missed B.
B, we said that was a county, this guy stood out.
But all of those, there's, she had, she had filled in for suggestions, and we need to know if those comments in red need to stay in there, or we take them.
Well, those are, the county, everyone says county. Work with the county for white feedback.
So do we want to leave that in there, that's the question.
So the red is, do we want it, or do we want it to go out?
No, no, I think, I, my, we did, we wanted to go out, 'cause.
But we need to work with the county to make sure that.
Okay, number nine is ours, the township, that's the blight ordinance, and B, objective B, but the, I think the other stuff is county-related, not.
But Jane, aren't you saying, like, number one, that, uh, that should be us, work with the county?
County, work with the county, yeah.
Yeah, I agree, you're right.
We don't have our zoning, but, but as a planning commission, you need to work with the county.
So you're saying that we, we should, the timeframe is TBD, but the responsible party is the planning commission?
I think we already do that, right?
Yeah, we do that.
So we leave just the red, so the red turns black, right, we leave it as work with the county to include the, in the zoning ordinance, so.
But do we act?
You're already doing?
No.
What's that?
On the timeframes for the things you're already doing, you can just put ongoing?
I can.
Because then that's just an ongoing project that you're gonna be working on through, so you're not necessarily putting it in.
I mean, is the number one there, Jane, one of the most important things you all do, right?
Yeah, we work with the county and the zoning ordinance.
Yes, yeah.
But our, but our work with the county is only in reviewing site plan, nothing else.
Because when they do a site plan, like, we just got the one, we can't do the River Street condos, and that's going, we've already commented.
Yeah, we already.
But that's reactive.
Now it's going before the.
That's our, we recommend to them our position, so.
And that's reactive, they're talking about actually implementing stuff, so, we don't do that.
We don't do that, we just, we just react to them.
We work with them to make sure that, to what we, what we like.
It would be nice to have that in there, but we don't like, we don't do anything about that, 'cause we can't.
Okay, so you're saying, what did you say you, we should put in that?
So we can force blight ordinance, the timeframe, that's just.
That one, we, it's a township.
Right, you're already doing it, but you just put ongoing.
Ongoing, and that's the township board, right, the blight ordinance, Bob?
And then number one, we would put ongoing.
Actually, that's the police.
Well, it's, okay, the police, okay, we'll put the police. Police, police.
And then.
Ongoing.
Two, she struck two out, so work with the county to ensure appropriate buffers are required to transition between commercial and residential areas, so why would she strike that out?
We don't do that.
We don't do that, we don't work with the county to do that.
I, I think she covers that in four.
In four, okay, so leave that, okay.
Just reworded it a little bit.
I think she crossed out some stuff that was redundant.
Okay, and then.
Just tried to streamline.
Work with the county to review setbacks, and we.
We normally don't do, I mean, we don't get into the setback thing, that's getting a little, we could, but.
We kinda do, when they come to us for, uh, when they send us a, when county planning sends us stuff that.
Yeah, you could, but.
They want a variant, we look at it.
We don't look at.
We don't need to concur or not concur with them.
That I don't, those setbacks, that's a, a done deal, you know, I mean, you got ten feet on either side, you know, you got forty feet from the lake to the, the house, and we can't, we can't recommend anything other than, we don't, I have never recommended on the appeals board. That's something that's black and white, and I know ninety-five percent of the people, you know, on their appeals board, they've rejected any of those things, so we normally, we get into the site plan reviews, as well, but.
So anything that, so any of these other numbers that are in, where she's got red text, we just put ongoing, is?
Correct, and then, um, okay, I was gonna go someplace with that.
Okay.
Keep on, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you can put ongoing and put planning department if you wanna, if you wanna do that, I mean, but we normally.
Another thing I was gonna bring up, don't forget that, so this is your master plan, that, you know, you need to look at where you're at today, where you came from yesterday, but this is looking at.
Right, for the next ten years.
The next ten years, so.
Well, we plan on doing that for the next ten years, I guess, we don't wanna get the zoning and anything out, but we want.
So Doug, all the stuff in red is suggestions, right?
Yes.
So we got red in one, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine. So that's what you're recommending, for Denise, rather.
Yeah. Enforce the.
Well, she's recommending if it works for you.
Correct.
In your particular situation.
Yeah.
Doesn't, no, we don't do it.
Well, we could, we could, we could.
Yep, so I get.
Just put ongoing and planning.
This is in the future, we, so ongoing, we want to, we want to maybe do this.
Just all these, put ongoing and planning, and then number nine, put ongoing police, that's the blight ordinance, okay?
Enforce blight ordinance, so we already do that.
Yeah.
That we.
But the police is the enforcement.
Yeah.
We already have a zoning.
They're the responsible party for the blight ordinance. Okay, moving right along. Okay, objective C, develop a complete streets plan for the township, create a walkable community through the implement of sidewalks and/or pedestrian bicycle paths, visual elements, destination points, coordination, improvements, and connect downtown with the surrounding neighborhoods, I think that's ongoing, and I think that's DDA, do I all agree?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, identify transportation planning needed through traffic counts, available parking, and use patterns. Road commission.
Maybe even DDA too.
Yeah, I think it's DDA.
So that's ongoing, okay. Develop a sidewalk improvement and maintenance plan that specifies a location and construction maintenance priority needs.
Township board for that.
Develop a sidewalk improvement plan?
Is that something we do?
That's developing new.
That's DD, that's, that falls within DDA in the village area.
Just a future?
I mean, they're.
Timeframe, what would?
This is looking for the future.
If you look at the DDA's CIP, they have sidewalks.
Okay.
Sidewalks on the, on the side streets, so that's.
Yeah, we need more too.
Yeah, so that's ongoing in DDA, I think.
Okay, the next one, designate Indian River as a walk-friendly community, is that something that we don't really have now?
Is that something that we wanna do?
Yeah, that's what, do we wanna do that?
That was something that came in the surveys, they want more paths, more walking, biking, hiking paths.
It's in the CIP going all the way to Cooperation Park.
So we can say ongoing, and who would be the responsible party?
It's a goal.
Goal, okay, just say future? Time frame?
Well, I don't know.
Within the next ten years?
That would be.
So who would be the responsible party, the DDA?
I would say parks, DDA, and Towneoff Free. Yeah, Off Free.
Okay.
Do you have a recreation committee?
Yes.
Yes, we have a big. Okay.
Or what they would look at.
Okay.
That is, yeah.
That's the township board.
Develop a corridor, corridor plans for primary transportation routes that include traffic calming methods, I don't.
DDA with the muckups.
Heard some issues about that already, so. Is that something we wanna look forward in the, in the planning commission, or planning?
I think isn't that our function, is kinda in, within this master plan, I mean, that's one of the things that's identified, and actually, the verbiage is in the law, right?
So your main street here is a county road, or is that?
That's a county road.
MDA.
Or MDA.
No, it's US, it's federal. It's a US, it's US twenty-seven.
Yeah, but I thought between the rivers, it's, it's, it's a, yeah.
Between, between the light and, um, I seventy-five, it is a county, that's a county road.
And twenty-seven?
Yes.
I, oh, all the way up?
Just to exit three thirteen.
So it's a primary.
The light at Kenns, that is a county, that is.
County, county is responsible for that.
So it's a primary.
Right, and then when you're at the light at Kenns to Vivios, it's the state.
Okay.
I know it seems strange, but.
Just south of that is county.
Right there, and it's county, south of Vivios, that little section is.
Okay.
And then sixty-eight is all state, right?
So is that a county road down, or is that?
What's that?
Number five, develop corridor plans for primary transportation routes that include traffic calming methods.
Yeah, I would say so.
That's a county road commission.
Normally, your DDA would be a part of that conversation also, if it's going through your town.
Okay, so we'll say county road commission and DDA. There with that? Okay. Implement and maintain a wayfinding program, install new street signs.
That's all we need, is more signs.
So the wayfinding.
We're gonna get a couple of new boat launch signs.
Yeah, so the wayfinding, I think.
Do you have a branding?
A branding.
I, I think, I mean, just through a, a little bit, when they put in the news, the new streetscape, there, I mean, it's all coordinated, like the colors and, and everything, like there's an emblem on the top of the signs, so they did, the DDA came up with a little bit of branding, but it's, it's not, I mean, there's, there's more that could be, there's more that could be done with that.
So what we see in some of the downtown areas, when, when we're talking about wayfinding and the new street signs, they're incorporating the branding with the street signs and wayfinding, obviously, wayfinding would be, you know, where to park, you can have wayfinding for your vehicle traffic, but pedestrian traffic, so sidewalks, you know, pointing where assets are, where the library is, where businesses are, it's as detailed as you want, or as general as you want, but normally, the DDA, that's always gets tossed to them and let them, those folks.
So we wanna say ongoing DDA, okay.
When you say branding, you're talking about this.
Well, you know, a little Indian River. Yeah.
Well, well, just like any kind of a, an emblem, or, you know, like, different logos and.
Like the golf club, we have our own emblem. Okay. Support the expansion of public transportation services, I don't think we're at that point.
I don't think we're there yet, but this is future, and I think that, um, I don't know, I'll let you talk.
So is that something that may have been mentioned in your survey, maybe that's, I mean, I'm not sure, but I'm not sure.
I don't think so.
That idea came from.
Yeah, I think there was a thing in there about, um, public, about public transportation, 'cause I think there were some people.
So some, initiative like that is something as simple as, you know, the, the township, getting with the transit authority, and saying, hey, our, our folks would like to see more transit in our township.
Shaboygan does not have a transit authority, as far as I know.
Well, there is a route share.
Area, regional ride.
Yes.
Oh, but that's, is that a county?
And I'm not sure if that's run by Shaboygan County, or if that's like a reach, like, money, money from somewhere has to come.
So you're, there's actually one funds that go to transit, local transit, now they may, the county may just contract that to a private, but there's funding, that funding that actually goes to them.
Well, I would say we would support public transportation, I mean, that's like, you know, apple pie and.
For the bus stop on twenty. I think, well, I think.
Twenty-five percent of the resident, survey respondents said.
Well, some of the people, they might, they might not even be aware that there is different.
Well, we would, we would support expansion, I mean, we would put that in, and I don't know who would be the responsible party for doing that.
Do we have to say on each one of these goals who's responsible for doing it, it can be a goal for the planning commission, but, I mean, does, do you have?
Well, we could say TBD, or we could say, I don't.
You could do that, because then you can open that discussion up, because at some point, you're gonna have this discussion with all your folks. And it might be a situation where the DDA says, hey, we'll take that, and then that's a project for them, but.
Okay.
What if you deferred it to the board? Isn't that what most municipalities do, they keep it at the highest legislative level, if, if it's that important to them?
It is, and then that body normally delegates from there.
Yes, that's, we could put the board, township board, yeah, then you can delegate who you think, at the time, if it becomes an issue, then. No, I'm, well, I'm, you're representing the board, so that's what I'm saying, I'm saying you, not, not you personally, but.
Thank you, we're clear.
Okay, Bob.
Yeah, I think, so the public transportation, I mean, that was a question that was on the survey, twenty-five percent of, so sixteen percent said yes, they thought it was adequate, twenty-five percent said no, and fifty-eight percent said they didn't know, or they were twelve.
I don't even know if we, do we wanna put it on, or just say future, and then say township?
For future, because we got an aging population, people are gonna ask for those services at some point.
And you had a high response on that, too, twenty-five percent.
Okay, maintain safe, convenient, on-street and off-street parking, redesign parking if necessary. Yeah, I think that's.
The board's.
Mike would like to see that again, I'll tell you. That's, okay, I wouldn't wanna go there, so that's, uh, who would do that, Mr. Kramer, would that be the township board, the combination with the DDA? Okay, that's what I would've thought, too. And that's ongoing right now, right? Okay, DDA import.
I'm still waiting for that quote, by the way, for River Street, you know about that?
Yeah, I know, yeah.
They're still working on it.
Okay, residential. Okay, the goal is promote the development of suitable housing opportunities for varied economic and lifestyle needs for the residents. The objective is ensure that the zoning ordinance is providing suitable opportunities for housing in appropriate locations and adequate standards, again, this is a a county item, but, uh, the first question is work with the county to ensure areas are designated as appropriate for all types of residential development, compatible and surrounding natural environment, including single-family, multi-family condominiums, low modern income rental complexes, and it's crossed off extended care, but I would say that's ongoing as far as, um, looking into that.
Why are we scratching off extended care with an aging population?
What, you want to look at number, number three?
It's under number three.
It's under number three.
Okay.
It has its own.
Again, mostly this is county, is county-driven, it's county-driven, most of this, 'cause it's, uh, zoning. But again, I know, uh, I've, uh, I've worked with, uh, Mr. Kramer and Sharon Lang from the county, too, so this is something I would think that we would
Oh, for sure.
Deal with the, uh, the board and the planning commission, as our responsible party in the township, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, and to me, that's ongoing.
Well, if we could just get one success in that area.
So it's ongoing, planning commission, board.
Doug, just, just a point, I know a business owner that owns a couple of restaurants.
Number one.
Oh, just for number one?
The housing authority is just so bad, uh, he's renting rooms in his own home to his employees.
Yeah, we have, with the, the big, uh, plan. Yeah, we had, with the, the big plant, Araco, that built, south of Grilling there, they had people that wanted to get, you know, get hired there, and they literally could not find a place to live. They had to turn the jobs down.
We have places to live here, it's just can you afford it?
Well, it's like that all over. I know in Taski, and, yeah, we can go.
Whole countries.
Yeah, especially in resort areas, where people are buying them up and making them into short-term rentals.
That's why.
Okay, okay, allow accessory dwellings units as a permitted use, and to me, that's.
Consider explaining that to me. Living in a garage, right?
Well, so right now, the county is allowing, they're building them up on Shawnee, there's a couple of people that are building, they're, they're calling them barna miniums, so they have seven hundred and twenty square feet, and they are actual pole barns. They're meeting the seven hundred and twenty square feet of living area and a portion of the pole barn. So I, they don't look bad. I mean, the two that are going up right now don't, I mean, they look fine, but.
So this would be.
They're already allowing.
This would be the county planning.
It's county.
County planning.
Is that still in our one type of designation? Because it's a building inside a building.
I don't know, I don't know how.
But that's a county planning.
I didn't think it was, I didn't think it was, they were supposed to be able to do that, but apparently, they made a change in the zoning laws, and so they are allowing them. So there are two going up, one on either side of my pole barn.
Is your seven hundred and twenty feet, can you put people in?
I could put something in there, and I'm like, we, we got kids, man.
Okay.
Is it legal now?
Yeah, they're already doing.
See, we learn something new all the time.
No, they are.
Okay, work with the county to ensure adult foster care, assisted living homes, nursing homes, senior apartments are permitted in appropriate zoning districts to facilitate the aging population. That's ongoing, and from the township, what would we say? Is that?
County.
Well, it's, yeah, it's county.
Planning commission.
County planning. Okay. Again, the next one, it's, I would say, preserve the integrity of existing residential zoned areas by protecting from intrusion of incompatible uses, and I know there's, huh?
Mike, Jersey.
Yeah, I know, that's, that's not working out so well for us.
So that's still a county planning, right?
Yep.
Yeah, unfortunately, they still don't have a code enforcer, I don't think.
They do.
Did they finally get one?
Yeah, but half the time, he's doing soil.
Yeah, he's doing so busy that he's not getting to.
I'll have to get after my buddy who's the chairman of the.
Very good.
County commissioners. Okay, so again, that's ongoing, and that's the county planning. Okay, work with Sheboygan County to address potential zoning incompatibilities such as residential uses from locating an area zone for agriculture or industrial uses. Again, that's the county planning.
And vice versa, using residential businesses.
Yeah, they, you know, they have to follow the, you know, the different maps that are out there for. Agriculture, industrial uses, you know, all the, so again, that's county planning, and that's ongoing. Require a buffer between residential uses and other more intensive uses. I don't know what that. So if somebody has a house and they want to put a bar next door, they have to have a buffer. Again, that's the county that would do that. They let something go in here that, our town that I wasn't happy about, but again, that's county planning. That was before Mike Tourist. So that's ongoing. Review permitted density determine if an increase in density is feasible in the county zoning ordinance. Again, that's county planning.
So does that, when we take it out of our plan or we leave it in there?
I don't know if it's ever been in our plan.
It's not, it's, it's suggested wording.
Suggested, do we want to add it then or not?
So basically, if someone wants to build a multi-unit or like an apartment in the township, and that's something that you, as a township, really want to have, that's where it says you're gonna work with the county to try and support the.
Okay, so we would put.
We're doing that now.
Yeah, so we should put county planning plus our planning department on that one. Okay, good, thank you for the clarification of that. So that's county planning and township planning, okay. Okay, the next one, number eight, permit more mixed-use development in additional districts. Is that something we want to see? No, I would say.
High density.
Development in additional districts.
That, that might.
So if there's commercial with potential residential up above or in back of, those are examples of mixed use.
Yeah, we already have.
We have that already.
We already have that.
But in, in the commercial district, you're allowed to have residences above.
Only if you have a business in there, so what you're saying is.
I'm more concerned about mixed use in a residential area, that's so RS one or two.
So how do we reject that or don't want to, just not put it in our master plan or just say that's something?
Because right, right now, we're in residential, we're not in commercial, we're only talking about residential.
Yeah, that's what I said, so.
You probably want to get rid of that.
Yeah, do we just scratch it off and not even put it in?
Say, where, what classes are?
So outside of your business district, if you have an area that's owned commercial, you pick the location, and they want to build commercial, but then they want to build housing above or behind, similar to.
Yeah, right.
You know, his, his story about the guy that's housing these people, but if you have, you know, they want to build living up above, and it's outside your downtown where you already allow it, then that's, that's the thing.
I don't think we want to do that.
But, but our, okay, so let's just take the Pinehurst, for example, that, that is outside of our.
But that's from grandfather. He wouldn't, he wouldn't get a permit to do that again.
But you.
But he's still in a commercial district.
Prevent them from being able to do that?
Pardon?
Would you want to prevent them from being able to do that?
Yeah, I would. I wouldn't want to put, you know, that type of housing in a residential area. I mean, that would be my personal opinion, but.
No, I just have, I, I'm thinking about this whole business owner that wants to live over his business.
But, but as well, business owner is in a, is in a commercial area, not.
Yeah, we're talking about residential area. We're talking residential.
This is not, we're not talking about commercial district right now.
So you're not talking about subdivisions, but what else would fall, what else would fall under?
Maybe some of the streets down in the village, you know, Juno, I think Juno Street actually is a commercial, even though it's residences and.
Usually, the first, the first block.
Yeah.
The back, like the post office block, for example, that's commercial. So on, on all of these side streets.
It's the first floor.
That first block back.
Could be commercial.
Could be considered commercial.
So do we?
The back block of, you know, some of these.
So this is actually back to your county zoning, because this is, would be addressed in the county zoning.
Yes, it would be.
But it's something that would you want to.
Yeah, we would want to be part of.
Be a part of.
Yes, so we would say in the, as a future, and then county planning and township planning.
So we want to permit it, is that what we're saying?
Not a residential, I would say no, we would not want to permit it in a residential.
But if the county, but if the county says they're going to do it.
They can do it.
They could do it.
But this is our master plan, and we can do whatever we want with it, whether they can adopt it or they cannot adopt it.
Yes.
That doesn't have anything to do with.
So can we put in there no or, you know, we're.
So what, what are you saying, scratch it?
I would, can we just scratch it off or?
If it's in, if it's in a residential area, do you, do you want that as an allowed use, that people are gonna be able to build up on top of their house apartments?
Well, or have a business below and they actually live themselves over top. That's when I see mixed use.
But as, are you allowing a business in a residential area? That's what I'm saying to you.
Okay.
Go ahead, Doug.
Go ahead.
Let Doug interject something.
You're under residential, but this speaks to development in additional districts, which would take it out of the residential district. It would be in the additional districts such as commercials. So you're talking about resident, allowing residential in the commercial.
Okay, so is that not?
Which we already do.
Commercial section of, of what we're doing here?
Essentially, it's, it may show up under commercial also. I didn't, I haven't read everything.
Okay, I, I haven't read through there yet all the way. I'd prefer to see.
But, and it may not be automatically allowed, it may be a case by case, it would be a situation where the planning commission would have to allow it.
Well, we do that now. I mean, we do have apartments in the commercial district, like you're saying, above the grass rail and above, and even with, where else are we gonna, we have other businesses that, you know, in between and, and there is mostly put some condos, you know, but that's, that's residential in a business district.
But even, even so, I, there, the county does allow some businesses to operate in residential, daycare, for example, accounting, for example, so if somebody wanted to put, have daycare on the first floor and have their apartment over top, I mean, that's what you're talking about, right? I think that's, no, that's not.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
So this is speaking outside of your residential.
Okay.
So like you go up to.
Residential in other districts that are not normally residential.
So it could be somewhere down on Straits Highway that's commercial and they want to put, okay, I think we look, we leave that, then.
So we leave it at county planning then? Okay, okay. Consider permitting homes smaller than middle and dwelling, unit size is primary dwelling, and we talked about that, the tiny homes, so, so that's county planning, and that's hopefully ongoing. Not in the future, we'd like to see that.
I think we want to be involved in that too.
Okay, well, so with that one, encouraging clustering residential development in areas where services and utilities are available to preserve open spaces. Yeah, that's, that was in the old plan, so that's ongoing, and that's county planning. Okay. Detective B, ensure that adequate housing stock is available in the township. I think when we went through our first review of the statistics, we were not, were not adequate housing for the number of people here, so. So the first item under implementation strategy, encourage participation with Northern Homes Community Development Corporation and Michigan State Housing Development Authority programs to rehabilitate substandard housing. Identify funding sources available for residents and prove, make property owners aware of such rehabilitation program. I think that's one thing that Mr. Kramer has been.
Yeah, so who pushes that? I mean, I'm somewhat familiar with MISTDA.
So there's.
Is that usually the real estate?
There. It comes from different sources. It could come from, out of economic development, they may have a developer that's looking at putting in a development, but because of the new initiatives out of MISTDA, so every region has a lead for housing work. And I'm not, I'm, I'm just not sure, you must be affiliated with Northern Homes here, because this was in your old plan. But the lead for Northeast Michigan right now is Target Alpena, they are the lead for housing initiatives in our region.
Here too?
Yes, they cover from Ogumaw County to Mackinac Bridge and everything east.
So there's nothing like Pataki and Emmett, there's.
So who would be the.
Northern Homes is their lead over there.
Okay.
So they have an organization that is tasked with building a, or resident, I'm sorry, residential initiatives.
So we'd have to change the name then, what you see here.
No, I would say, because of where you're located, I would leave that, because if, if Northern Homes, if they have a lead on a developer that's interested, you, you don't want to lose that, you, you know, you definitely want to keep them.
But we would work through our county, because the county has a person, Bob, if you remember Sharon Lang, that's kind of coordinating that she works for the, she's on.
Hey, Doug, let me ask you, we just put up some prime real estate per se of M sixty-eight, eight point six six acres. And even though it's in a light industrial area, it can be used as multifamily with no change in zoning. Is this something that we should be bringing to the attention of Northern Homes Community Development Corporation? You know who you're talking about?
So that I would have to check on to make sure who's truly covering your township, because you're in Sheboygan County. My understanding is it's gonna be Target Alpena, so the gentleman's name is Lenny Avery, he should be reaching out to all the, all the communities to say, hey, I'm working on housing initiatives for, for the region.
Would that be something Sharon Lang would be working with?
She already knows.
Okay.
But I don't, I was just saying that if you could put me, maybe when, if you think about it, send me their contact information, and I'm gonna send this home, because boy, if we could just get one multifamily.
So is the property that just is going up for sale, is that in the industrial park?
Yes, but not, there's two areas for sale, one's in the back, so you can't put residents there, but the one in the front is absolutely perfect for multifamily. It can't grow single families, but we looked up the zoning, in a light industrial area, you can't have multifamily.
So that's in the industrial park?
Right, but it's on M sixty-eight, so when you turn in. When you turn in, it's right there on the left. Next to the Veritas.
So who would be the responsible party? Would you suggest that we, you know, that would, because we would be in favor of that.
So it would be, I would put township as zoning.
County EDC.
Okay.
Does this involve? And county zoning.
Okay.
Does this involve funding at all from these organizations or just?
Oh, I'm sure it will be.
MISTDA does.
Grants.
No, MISTDA does.
County EDC and.
If you, if you think about that, if you could send it to that, that'd be great.
County Board of Commissioners, I would think would be, okay. The next one, investigate the impacts of short-term rental homes on the availability and price of homes for residents.
I don't know if we need to investigate anything, we already know.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not, yeah.
Yeah, they hear we can't do much better.
So what do we do? There's no response, we.
There, you know there's a problem.
Yeah, so I mean.
Scratch the whole thing?
Yeah, well, the next one would.
Well, it's still, I mean, we still gotta do something. I don't know that we scratch it.
Well, it says investigate, you're just gonna do it.
Yeah, we're not gonna investigate.
Well, the next question says consider placing a limit on the number.
Yes.
What's that?
In the question three.
So we scratch, so you're saying scratch question two.
Yeah, we're not gonna investigate.
So we don't need to investigate.
We don't need to investigate.
Underneath that, it says about the considering.
Yeah, that's the one that's, that's gonna be a little sticky.
Right there.
What are the adjacent township?
They don't do anything. Nobody's doing anything.
Yeah, it's a free fall.
She says adopt a township board note.
To address short-term rental housing number of homes.
I changed adopt to consider.
Okay, go ahead.
So there are a number of municipalities in the state that are addressing this. I think the reason why she has number two in there is to get to number three.
Yeah, but we, we pretty much know we have an issue.
We got it, huh?
So when you say, okay, so let's go back, so back up, so when we, when it says investigate, what or, what does that mean to you?
Well, that.
See if you have a problem.
That would be working with probably the county and potentially other partners to have a study done, to see what that looks like in the.
The county's like Punches Pilot, they wash their hands of it. I've gone back to them about this.
We're just talking about an ordinance, rules, that's all, rules, regulations for all the short-term rentals we have here that are taking over.
Well, that's.
As long as Michigan place has ordinance.
Okay.
So I don't know that the county necessarily, I mean, when, the last time he was here, we talked.
They're probably looking for us to go ahead and do it.
Mike Tourist told me that's a township, Mike Tourist told me that's a township issue, because each township is, is different.
Don't want to touch it.
And they don't want to touch it.
So let me ask you this.
Go ahead.
Is it a concern to this group?
Yes, it's a concern. I brought it up our last planning meeting too.
I would say you leave it in your plan, because that's an issue that you feel that needs to be addressed in the future.
And we think.
But I think we need to leave the word consider.
Two implies that somebody's got to do some work and spend money.
So.
We already know there's.
Yeah, we're not, we're gonna scratch two right out of there, Bob.
Okay.
Okay. So three, we're gonna say, we're gonna consider placing a limit on number, we're not, yeah, I don't know if we want to place a limit on number, we're gonna consider the short-term rental problem, I guess. I don't know if we want to get specific on what we do. My.
Consider.
My consideration is to put some kind of, of regulations on them, and I'd like to see a registration program and. And I'd like to see a registration program and, uh, where they would have to pay like four hundred dollars a year and that money would go into the township coffers. Whether that would happen or not, that's something that, uh-
Well, we'd have to go, I, I would think if we were gonna collect money, it would go into some sort of enforcement.
Well, that too. That would go. But again, I think we should consider-
So you're gonna read the language and then we're gonna disagree with the language of number three?
Yeah, number three, we're gonna consider, I don't know if we need to consider pla, excuse me. Consider a limit on, we're not gonna put a limit, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, you can consider it and you'll-
We're gonna consider-
I think that's fine. I think the word considers great.
Yeah, but placing a limit on the number, okay.
It's a ten-year plan. Who knows?
Okay, you guys, yeah, that's fine.
I'll go, but you may still be here.
I don't know.
Other communities are.
If it's a ten-year plan, who knows what's gonna happen?
So that's a planning commission thing.
But you can, when you say consider, you consider the pros and cons of doing it and then you make a decision.
I think it's joy.
Yes, we are.
Well, township board, but we have to-
If, if the planning commission, we would, we would develop-
We would develop an ordinance, you would approve it, just like we did with, uh, food trucks.
Yes.
And you would approve it, so, okay. So how do we wanna say ongoing or would we say?
We just leave it ongoing.
Ongoing and that's, uh, planning commission and township board.
I don't think you should have the word adopt in there though, Mike.
No, no, I didn't say adopt. I said consider.
It says adopt.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Sure. Well, so we leave it there, once the, so if you need an ordinance, you have to adopt it. So you either adopt it or reject it.
No, 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 the, uh, the second line is totally different than the first line. One is a limit. The other one is the registration program that Mike's talking about, and I would just say that you wanna consider.
Guess, consider adopting a township ordinance to, instead of placing a-
Take the word adopt out and substitute consider.
Yeah, put it to consider again, okay.
And then put planning commission and board, right?
Right, exactly.
Now, should the DDA be part of that or no?
No, I don't think so. No, that's something that, uh-
It's outside of the scope. It wouldn't even be in there, in their area.
But that's a big thing and I know that Denise, go ahead, Doug, you're, you called on.
So if you're gonna keep number three in, I just have to, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have to go back to number two 'cause I need to protect you, because if you're gonna enact an ordinance like this and enforce it, then you need to be able to defend that decision. So if a developer wants to sue you because you're not allowing them, because now you reached your limit, they're gonna sue you because what basis did you use to develop that ordinance? And if you can't defend the basis, that's where a third party comes in and does a study to, to see what that actually looks like and has the support for you to then develop an ordinance that will make it more sound and defendable.
Or they did that with the master plan. Over fifty percent of residents want some kind of rules and regulations, so they did that.
Do you, do you know how many there are in the township now?
Yeah, I can tell you, currently as of yesterday, um, you know-
She investigated.
Uh, there's a hundred and nineteen Airbnbs, there's, um, seven hundred and fifty-eight Verbos, there's all these, home to go, a hundred and twenty.
So I think we've already, we already know we need some kind of, whether we need to investigate, like Bob said, where's the money gonna come from to investigate?
They just started talking money. It's gonna be DOA and then we're not gonna be able to do it.
Exactly.
But other counties, they've done this. They all register. Where I live, they register. They give their name, their address.
We have a, we have a comment period here too, 'cause we gotta get through all this stuff, but thank you though for your-
So, so we're leaving number two.
No, we're scratching it. We're leaving.
But you're, but you're leaving yourself open to lawsuits, is what he said.
We can, it says investigate. We've already investigated.
But you, but you don't have any data yet.
The data.
So who's gonna get their data?
We're gonna have to, so we work with the county. I don't know. We're gonna have to figure it out. I mean, that's our job.
If the money comes available, if there's a grant that's available for someone-
Well, that's the other thing. Hopefully there's a grant that comes through. Other than that, you know, this is in the future now, Bob, remember. So again, that's planning commission and board to investigate.
So, but you're, what you-
We'll leave number two in.
Don't do that investigation and have that data set by a reputable whatever organization.
Again, hopefully if you get a grant to do it.
Then when we implement these ordinances or things, they can come back legally and say you had no justification for doing that. So you, you're wanting, you say you wanna protect us legally.
Well, we'll leave number two in and we'll worry about if we, if we needed funded, we'd have to get a grant, 'cause again, the money we're doing. I know Denise has worked and done ordinances, so has Matt Cross has done, just finished Petoskey and Boynton City. So we have the expertise if we need that done down the road, so.
But you said talking about that, the cost.
But you said the key word right there, sue. Whenever you get the word sue, it's a dollar sign.
We'll leave it in, but again, that's something we gotta go. Okay.
Who's gonna do it?
Again, that's the planning commission and the board.
Planning commission, county.
Huh? The county's not gonna do it.
We can take the information they've developed, put it into a, you know, a, a nice-
Well, again, you'd have to have it certified, so my too, 'cause, okay, but that's, that's down the road. We'll just leave investigate in there. We'll worry about if we're-
Board, so board.
Okay. All right. So the number four, complete a housing needs assessment.
And those, would those go in hand in hand?
No, that's completely different.
They, they can, because when they look at housing, they will look at housing stock and identify that housing stock is used for non-housing or not, for non-residential. But with the housing assessment, uh, there have been grants in the past that have paid for those. And I know Crawford County, when I was there, uh, we had, we got a grant to pay for a housing assessment for the local. So, uh, but those, the housing assessment, what's nice about that is when you have a need for a developer, with these assessments, you can go, here's the need for the housing. It's in, it's in a study that's done by someone other than you. We just know we need it.
Would that be something the county would have to provide us? I would think the county would have somebody like a Sharon Lane or somebody that they, uh, EDC.
Yeah, generally you work with your county and do a housing assessment.
So we could say-
Could we get MEDC funds to do that at the township level?
So the last one that we did, they were MEDC funds, but, but I have not seen that program in a while. But it's not, not to say that they're not gonna come back, because housing is at, at the top of their list. Housing, childcare, and economic development.
So we wanna say-
So we need to get that RRC thing done.
All right, we wanna say county and township, whether we say township board or county slash township board. And then if we get a grant or something, do that, but I would go to the county first to see that, so, okay. So say county township board. Develop marketing materials for sites and house, which housing could be, oh.
Let's put the board there.
Yep, that's a board. We'll put the board on number five.
And six.
And six, okay. Work with available, okay. Okay, economic development. Here we go. Strengthen the local economy through development and retention of enterprises which provide employment opportunities. Provide a full range of commercial, that's goal one. Goal two is provide a full range of commercial facilities and infrastructure which is adequate to both serve residents and tourist markets. So, objective A, encourage the promotion and development of Indian River area as a business center serving both the local consumer population and sub-regional market base, so. Okay, this is probably an EDC thing too, but, um, number one, promote Indian River areas, all-season recreation destination and marketing materials. That's the chamber and tourist bureau.
Tourist Bureau's dead.
Tourist Bureau's dead. So if Chamber comes, they would be the-
They would be some, but they're very hesitant to take on that role. All that deal fell apart and the tourist bureau is gone.
So what would we, who would be the developer of a-
The marketing and promoting Indian River.
Your DDA can a lot of times do those promotional programs too.
So would we say DDA?
Pure Michigan's about all you're gonna get right now. I don't know.
So under RRC, there are technical assistance dollars to help with branding and marketing. And usually they work with the DDA on that.
DDA, okay, DDA.
DDA and the board.
And the board, okay.
And the board and, and county EDC.
County EDC, okay.
So the chamber is out.
Right. Yeah, then, yeah. Okay, number, number two. Achieve Main Street programs designation in coordination with or through the Downtown Development Authority, so.
That would be DDA.
That would be DDA and that's ongoing. Okay, you got that? Number two.
Number two, okay, Main Street program designation information.
That's just pure DDA, right?
Yeah. Encourage expansion of establishments, establishment of new commercial use of downtown Indian River. That would be DDA downtown Indian River, right, am I?
Well, actually, it's the, we've, we've reviewed plans for expansion in between and the other ones.
Yeah, that would be the planning commission, the DDA and the board through MEDC, RRC, right?
Yep.
And also your economic development.
And EDC, county, okay.
County EDC, yeah.
County EDC and the board. So we got four different things here. Okay. Maintain an attractive and walkable downtown by providing and maintaining street signs, trees, benches, waterway finding signs, maintain sidewalks, sidewalk pass, walking pass, focus on adding preserve, that's DDA, right?
DDA and the board, right?
Yep.
When was that add? Objective C.
So number four is DDA and the board.
DDA's out of running, so the board's gotta step up.
Okay, well you do that for-
Isn't this redundant though?
RAC just started doing that, by the way.
So the reason why it's under economic development is because one of the economic development strategies for downtowns is, is creating a sense of place, so that's why it's in, under this also.
In addition to where we have the walkable community earlier.
So the walkable community is an extension of the downtown also.
Okay.
Hope that makes sense.
So that's gonna be DDA and?
DDA and board, number four. Number five would probably be the same thing. Develop downtown design guidelines to achieve collective identity, encourage creative design planning techniques which provide or produce visual harmony with preserving special features and protecting natural resources. Include these guidelines in a zoning ordinance, so that would also be the county.
That has to be county then, 'cause we don't have one.
So it's gonna be-
But I would think that, uh-
It'd be DDA and county.
Yeah, I would say DDA and county.
County zoning rather.
Counties, yeah. Planning.
A little bit of forethought, so that, so those strategies there fall under the main street strategies and I think that's probably why she included that as a down the road in the future.
Well, that would be something if we got the RRC.
Probably wanna add board to that.
Yeah, 'cause that way, 'cause that's one thing I, I brought up, and Dawn brought up too, that this Main Street thing, if we get grants for that too, that would really-
I mean, I think the board's gotta be on all one through seven.
Yeah.
From what I see.
Yep. So add board one through seven. Utilize programs and ants, uh, facades and rear entrance to buildings. That's always been a county thing.
Yeah, that's county two.
County's only-
County EDC and the board.
Yeah. So I know with signs and stuff, that's always been a county thing and the, uh, the DDA or the chamber tried to get people to have all the same sized signs, until one time and that didn't go through pretty well, so, okay. Review zoning and other regulations to ensure they encourage the use of outdoor space in businesses such as sidewalk cafes. So that's to me is the county planning and township planning and board, right?
And the DDA.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that have a lot to do with the, um, like the farmer's market that's going in and the, um, things that are going on at, um, the Northland, the brewery? Where they're doing their outdoor market and all of that, so that's-
Well, that would be, that would be part of the board, the DDA working with that. And then some of this stuff require, review zoning and other regulations and encourage, to ensure they encourage the use of outdoor space, that would be us working with the county planning commission with the zoning. Does that, does that sound? Plus you'd have the board and DDA involved with number seven. Okay? Number eight. Work and maintain and rehabilitate commercial structures and obsolete properties through the State of Michigan and federal programs. Again, that would probably fall into the RRC and the, and the grants or the board, or that'd be something that, uh-
So a couple of things there that the township could look at doing, um, they've been having some, uh, light grants for the state.
Yeah, we have some.
So that's an option.
And we had two of them.
The other thing that, uh, I did when I was in Grayling, when, uh, we had foreclosed properties coming up for a tax sale, uh, we had right, first right of refusal. Uh, we were actually buying those properties and then we marketed those properties to developers with stipulations that they had to demo and build new. What, the nice part about that is you get rid of obsolete structures, but then with them building new, you increase property values around those obsolete structures. And then we were able to get developers to do that affordably, at least obtain the property to do that. So that was very, that was a very successful project that we had, that, uh, we encouraged development.
So would that be like county EDC and the, and the township board for grants, okay?
Cause I think, um, we did that with, um, with the in-between, uh, that, the building that he bought at Kitty Connor across the street. That was, Mike worked on that with, because that came up for a tax sale, so he made-
So that's township board and, uh, county EDC.
Yeah, we declined that because it was so expensive.
Yeah, but he worked, he worked with Tony Boom and those guys to, because they needed the additional parking.
Somebody else bid on that too, and they said it was ninety thousand dollar or, I forget how much it was, but they backed away. Okay. Implement a DDA plan where feasible, that's DDA. That's an easy one. Number eleven, create opportunities for community interaction such as outside shopping, art displays and festivals. Uh, we do that now through the, um, chamber of commerce, right?
But, yeah, but they're not doing that stuff anymore. We, we-
All right, that, that's, I was gonna leave this to board comments, but it affects a lot of the things we've talked about, the economic development versus the support for these things that the chamber is not apparently gonna be doing any longer.
What do they do then?
Well, the, the DDA, um, apparently offered to help the chamber with the Fourth of July parade and then received a letter from Chris Brown on behalf of the Indian River Chamber. And it just came a few days ago and, um, I, I can read it real quick.
No, we don't need to get into it.
Well, it's, it's kind of-
Okay, go ahead.
It says, "The Chamber Board has recently held thoughtful and deliberate discussions about its mission, purpose, and what we currently do to support that. In an effort to return to our core mission of economic development and member support, we have, we have directed our ED, the executive director, to focus her time and energy on mission-specific activities that promote these goals. In addition to her concentrating on our core mission, there is not enough time or budget to allow our ED to work on non-chamber-related projects. Therefore, we have directed our ED to not take on any extensive role in Fourth of July or any other activities that do not support our mission. We are happy to help promote any community activities through our website and newsletter. With more time and compensation for Chamber help, we are certainly open to collaborating on future events. On a separate but related note, we would like to inform you that we have put out a request for proposal to real estate agents with the goal of selling the Chamber building. However, the Chamber is not closing. We have determined that paying the expenses, taxes and upkeep for a building that is almost exclusively used for tourism-related business is not fulfilling our mission. We would appreciate your support in this effort by helping to squelch any nonsensical chatter that may arise from this posting." The, the point is, the, the Chamber has traditionally supported a number of events in the community and it sounds like they are pulling back to do just economic development and no, not support of any of the other community related, whether that's the parades or the summer fest, winter fest. I don't know.
They're gonna get rid of winter fest, summer fest.
Winter fest, summer fest.
I guess you'd wanna have more clarification from the letter, that's, I mean, because it brings a tremendous amount of economic development to Indian River. of economic development to Indian River.
Exactly, but this, this is just sent to the DDA. And they're, they're pulling back. It came from the Indian River Chamber of Commerce Board.
I, I know that, just as a point of information, I know they have to change the name from Summer Fest to Summer Gala because they gotta cease and desist from Milwaukee Summer Fest.
But it sounds like they're pulling back from all of these type of events.
Well, until we get clarification, we have.
At least we know they're gonna do the Summer Gala.
The Summer Gala.
It doesn't say that.
So how do we wanna, we wanna put DDA's?
So I think DDA is gonna be.
We'll have to put DDA in for now for a placeholder.
Instead of putting chamber on these things, then we should just put.
We'll put DDA as a placeholder until it gets sorted out.
We also, we also in our master plan, where we previously reviewed.
Okay.
Chapter three, we have the chamber in there as a community resource and what they're doing. So that may, we may need to relook at that part of our master plan as well.
Promote evening events designed to foster interaction of business and community members and visitors after hours. Again, that's DDA at this point, so. Okay.
What are we doing with twelve?
Promoting evening events.
Yeah, 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 it's at DDA.
They're saying DDA, yeah, but for now.
It's like the music.
Yeah, till we.
All that kind of.
Till we get that sorted out, you know? I don't think the, the board wants to run it for the planning commission.
It's part of a business function, actually.
Yeah, so let's stick with the DDA. Okay, moving on. Develop and promote the growth of a device.
I'm not sure, I mean, I know at the recent DDA meetings, they're concerned that supporting a lot of these ongoing community events are taking money away from their, their corners.
Well, again, until we, until we get it figured out, we could argue this all night, and we got twenty, twenty-five minutes left, so.
We can't just say, okay, DDA, you're gonna do all these, because they don't have the funds to do that.
Well, it's, who, who would you put on there then? They would be the natural one to do it. Just leave it blank, or they won't do anything?
I put a TPD.
I'd scratch number twelve, I don't think that's a governmental function.
Uh, if, yeah, we wanna scratch it, it makes it easier, so let's just scratch twelve. That way we don't have to. Okay, moving on. Develop and promote the growth of device, economic base to serve the employment and commercial needs of residents and visitors. Encourage establishment of home-based businesses. Got established for those who rely on primary internet-based businesses and/or provide web-based jobs. As part of the overall marketing campaign, promote home-based businesses. Again, I was gonna do the marketing. Opportunities by highlighting current success stories, identify possible opportunities for missing services in Tuscaraway Township that could be done from home. That's something, that's way over our head, I think.
That's your economic development folks.
Yeah, that's EDC.
And the board, is there a?
Okay, the board and EDC. Same thing with number two?
Apparently the chamber.
Yeah, yeah, if that's what they wanna do. Uh, we'll, we'll put them on there yet.
And then for number two, it'd be the same.
Same thing, yep.
I, I think that also has to be county zoning. Because you have to, if you're gonna run a home-based business, you have to.
All right, well, I had the county zoning. Same with number two. Explore options, i.e. tax abatements that would further assist business recruitment, encourage township staff to participate in programs, seminars, conferences which educate the available opportunities. So that's ongoing, and that's a township board, right? They, would they encourage?
For tax abatement.
Yep.
Yeah. So that's a township.
I don't, I don't know, I don't think the township board has any authority for tax abatements.
We, I think we, I think we do, I know that they talked about it. I think Mike brought it up at a couple of meetings that we had about tax abatements.
I've asked repeatedly, and I get it during the headlights from the attorney.
So that's where your EDC folks would be assisting those businesses and working with the township board to see what abatements are available. Depending on the business, that's really, a lot of times driven by the business.
I think we could do is waive our one mil, that's, but I don't even know, that's a, I guess I'd have to find out.
Do you have a TIF, don't you?
Yeah.
Sorry.
We're there for the DDA.
Yeah.
So we would say EDC and township board is a responsible party, if we did that.
Would it be township board, or would it be, would that fall under DDA?
Township board and the EDC.
EDC. Form business owners and employees about grant opportunities. Again, that's the township board, I would think, and the DDA for business orders.
I think it's more EDC. And I think that gets, so, so, so if we get this RRC designation, if we get through that, and we have match on Main Street grants, we have those, those kinds of, and the technical assistance for grants and stuff, how does that get relayed out to the business district?
So, the match on Main is under the Main Street program.
Yep.
To be eligible for a Main Street program, you'd have to provide a full-time staff person to do that. So, under that program, that staff person, and then whether, depending on what board is overseeing it, it could be a completely standalone, it could be, sometimes you see him under a chamber, sometimes you see him under a DDA. They're all different across the state, they're actually across the nation.
Okay.
But, once you have the Main Street program in place, they will hyper-focus on downtown. So any programs that are available through that, that will come through your Main Street people.
Okay.
Okay.
So we wanna say township board would be.
For right now.
Yeah, they would be designated, who would be the, yeah. Yeah, it looks like maybe, you know, Mike might be involved with it too. Engage businesses to identify talent needed and understand how internships can be used to enhance their business objectives. I don't know if that's something we wanna take out of this township.
That's your EDC.
EDC, okay. So again, support regional economic development goals, that's EDC too, for Northeast Michigan.
That's us.
That's us?
That's.
Oh, you?
That's NMCAD.
NMCAD, okay. Oh, good, we finally got you guys doing something.
Yeah, we, we hold the comprehensive strategy.
Okay, well, that's good to know. Okay.
So, NMCAD is, so I'm sure and clear in my understanding, so there's local planning, which would be, there's county planning.
Yeah, we gotta get.
And then NMCAD is regional planning, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
All right. Objective C, work and attract diverse age group to township by providing thriving economics for training and job growth as well as maintaining family-friendly, high-quality girls' life. I would think some of these would be Economic Development Corp. Support and participate with local and regional economic development personnel. Education Institute to provide job training opportunities within the township. I, I don't think we're.
Maybe you could bring the school.
Yeah, but, like, they're, they're big into that, right, no, job training.
So you're saying the school district?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Why not? They haven't gotten a check.
No, we haven't got them doing anything. Encourage.
And EDC, is that it?
Yeah.
And EDC.
Michigan Works will consider that too.
Okay.
So number two would be Michigan Works too, probably. So number two would be Michigan Works too, probably, and encourage entrepreneurism, training programs to assist residents in starting, maintaining their own small businesses.
That would be the SPDC, Small Business Development Center.
What about the college for number one over there?
North Central. They do have, uh, job training programs.
And then you got the welding school over there.
Correct.
Yeah, but it's local high school. Central.
Okay, great information package for new and potential residents and businesses, would that be the chamber?
Well, they always used to do that.
I'm just saying.
No, they, they would all, they would have packets for newer residents.
Right, that's what.
I don't know if they still, I.
So.
So what would we, we just leave it blank?
I would say that would be a township function.
Ain't gonna happen.
Yeah.
Well, basically, it's, it's as simple as putting together, you know, if someone comes in, they want, they're gonna locate here, they may come in for, you know, permits, do I get my permits here, no, but I'm new, here's information about the township, it's literally as easy as making up a packet of information.
So is it?
Or direct to your website.
So do we want to say the township website?
Well, yeah, so.
Township Board website.
Township Board website.
Yep.
Okay.
You can just tell the police chief to do it. Someone said it's okay.
He's got enough going on, he's trying to keep. Okay.
He can, he can deliver them.
He'll take it on the way out of town if he's out.
Number D, develop friendly environmental, environment in a township, okay. Encourage the development of professional enterprises which offer employment and growth opportunities to the township skilled workforce. Again, that's what the, how do we say, who would be responsible for that?
School district?
School district, I would.
I think so.
Uh, Michigan Works and your EDC.
EDC and Michigan Works, okay.
Oh, I like number two.
Okay, this is right up Bob's alley. Pursue the development of a sewer system to enhance development opportunities downtown in the river while protecting water quality.
Okay, well, that's already done, so that's.
Yeah, Township Board.
Yep.
Review and recommend revisions to county zoning to ensure development of property within the township is not necessarily burdensome, streamline approval process.
How do you guys?
That would be the Planning Commission, working with the County Planning Commission.
Right, you'll find that's a requirement of the RRC.
Okay, but yeah, I was told that's gotta be part of our master plan too, so. Implement and maintain practices outlined by the MEDC redevelopment, right, we're doing that communities program. So that would be the Township Board, right? Okay, provide clear guidelines for developers on the township website about county approval process. Frequently ask questions such as development guide, we just talked about that earlier.
The board, and that's also, is, correct me if I'm wrong, it's an RRC requirement?
Is it enough detail on the website to get somebody from point A to point B?
So again, that would be the board and the website, they would have to update that when they do the RRC board website. Okay. Okay, the next one.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Go back, okay.
Number five, what?
Provide clear.
Guidelines for developers from county, on the county web, on the township website about county approval processes and frequently ask questions such as a development guide.
All that's already on the county website.
No, what, and it's gotta be on the township.
So you can put a link from the township.
Black link to the other?
It has, for RRC, yes.
Okay.
It does, it's a requirement.
Put a link there.
You can have a link from.
Yeah, that's all you need is a link.
I should.
Okay, next one is market the township to attract additional commercial industrial enterprise, well, that's an easy one. Yeah, I'm, I'm going, I'm trying to go fast now. I know, but.
We've got a few more pages.
Yeah, well, let's go quickly here, work towards development priority, redevelopment, uh, Phil Development. I don't know, that's something, package priority development sites, financial, anybody have any ideas on?
That's your EDC.
EDC, okay, we'll put EDC in all of those. Sheriff's Department, yeah.
Just put EDC and board on one way.
Okay. All right, so the next one. This is, uh, provide inner structure, infrastructure and public service which facilitate, oh, geez. Facilitate, whatever, what's the word?
Facilitate.
Facilitate, thank you, the goals of the master plan and meet the needs of the public, we do that. Maintain a six-year capital improvement plan, that's the, uh, Planning Commission, right?
Yep.
Continue to pursue implementing sewer system, that's the Township Board. Continue to provide and support local public safety, emergency, police department, fire department.
Board.
Board again. County road improvements, consistent board, uh, have comprehensive waste management efforts, board, okay. Continue to pursue expansion, high-speed communications to, board.
Uh, whoa, whoa.
Well, that's board and county.
County EDC.
Yeah.
Yeah, board and EDC.
Yeah, board and EDC, number six. Number seven, monitor and explore utility expansion needs as more development occurs, that's.
Who's doing that?
That's board, DDA and county.
Okay.
Same way with number eight.
You're lucky with that.
Number nine.
Yeah, exactly.
Work and create a more pedestrian-friendly downtown.
DDA.
DDA. Establish, maintain, ongoing communication with adjacent townships regarding planning projects.
Board.
Okay, number 10 is board. Uh, maintain a balanced budget, fiscal.
Board.
Board. Explore contracting single trash challenges, that's a board too. Well, I know, I think most people are okay with her, on the survey, with the trash pickup, you know, there's a few people that were against it, so. All right, we got a couple more pages to go here, so we gotta move, we got like 10 minutes. Use the township website to provide meeting, and this is number one under B.
Board.
Board, board.
One, two, three and four is all board.
Board, okay. Agriculture and forestry. That would be the, uh, provide economically feasible options for continued agriculture and forestry use lands with prime farmland.
County.
County? Planning Commission and, and County Planning Commission.
DNR.
Part of our.
DNR?
We've got a real success story. DNR helped us sell $30,000 worth of lumber, so.
Allow, encourage farmland protection such as through transfer development rights, purchase development rights, conservation easements and cluster, clustering non-farm development.
Um, that's a county issue, farmland protection and DNR?
Just county. Okay, participate, efforts to educate community, recor, that's, that's county again, too. Agriculture preservation, and we don't have the ability to do that. Work with county and ensure solar facilities are developed in appropriate places while preserving prime farmlands, again, that's a county.
Sharon's working on that.
So that's County EDC?
Yeah.
Okay.
No?
County planning.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Okay.
Yeah, she was working on it too.
All right, we'll put EDC, county planning. Work and maintain, retain, manage existing forest land, that's county. Promote reforestation, secondary forestry management areas, that's.
That's DNR.
DNR or county?
Miss Safeyear does that every day.
Okay. Okay, work with county, write greater zoning flexibility regarding use of large pounds parcels of land.
That's you.
Us. Planning Commission and County Planning Commission, okay. Recreation. We're down to like two pages, guys, so. Provide recreation facilities, safe access to your round, healthy enjoyment.
That's a.
Parks.
Parks Department.
Parks Commission.
Yeah, Parks Commission. That's for all of them, it looks like.
I don't know the ESR's at number two.
It's really a standard, that's in my trouble, that already happened, so it's done, so I'm going.
So that's done, that's ongoing, that's parks.
Parks Commission.
Parks Commission. Develop, yeah, everything else is parks, isn't it? Expand parks, township parks.
Number six, number six is, would not be parks.
Yeah, board's gotta, he's right, board's gotta be in a lot of that because of the funding issues.
Okay, so we'll put parks and board?
Because under the new, uh, six-year capital improvement plan, that won't come with parts that'll come from the board, the money.
Okay, so again, everything else like establish handicap, accessible fishing, which we have, at Devo Beach and Veterans Pier.
It says at the proposed Veterans Pier at Devo Beach.
That's from the last, that was 10 years ago. So that's, we don't even need to put that in there, we can cross that out because it's already there.
You can put maintain.
Maintain.
Maintain, that's established.
Okay.
Maintain.
Put maintain.
Already established and it's done, it's not just.
Promote accessibility of OR, RV and snowmobile trays, trails.
So we went back?
Do you have a tourism group?
No.
How do you do?
I don't know if they do anymore.
Well, so I was told we, that it's not defunct yet, that it still exists, they just don't.
No, that's, yeah, to be determined, I guess what, to be determined on that one.
There's a lawsuit pending.
Let's wait and get, bone hunting, fishing opportunities in the area, that's another TBD. Seek grant assistance for trail and park improvement project, that's the board, everything. Parks Commission and board? Parks Commission and board? Okay.
I think seven, that's the last page, right?
Okay, good. Protect and preserve water, groundwater, surface water, woodlands, this is natural resources, wetlands, open space.
Everybody.
Continue to pursue the implementation of municipal sewer system, protect, that's the Township Board. Work with Sheboygan County, who's encouraged land use, prepare, or pattern it oriented with natural resources, features, water resources, that's Planning Commission and the County Planning Commission, Township Planning Commission and County.
I, I, I've got a question, back when we talked about continue to pursue the sewer system, didn't we talk about in the master plan, and maybe this would be the point for goal, to talk about considering or investigating sewer septic inspections in the township and ordinance that would do that? Would that be the health department?
That's a health department.
But, but, um, the state of Michigan now is trying to pass laws.
Right, I know.
That will do that, but in the meantime, they say individual townships, the county won't do that.
Well, I know Chris Grinsvater, who was working on that, he's no longer doing that, but.
But, but.
But that's something that.
The township can do an ordinance, so I, I, it might be something we need to think about because once the sewer is in, we still have a whole lot of aging, um, septic systems in the township, and there's no law right now or no guarantee that the state's gonna pass something.
Well, we can, but, we can put Planning Commission to them, I mean, for, with working with the Township Board, if and when we need to have septic.
Chip of the net has some sample templates.
No, no. This is something that Phil Skaggs is working on, he's the representative from Grand Rapids, has got about a 10-point septic program, so hopefully. It's a long time coming for septic for this township.
But they have township templates that townships could do.
Oh, we'll put Planning Commission to the town.
It's only 10 years old, so I mean.
So that's on number one you're talking about, right?
Yeah.
Or maybe have a, have a separate line item, consider that.
So I put board.
Okay, through zoning and public education, maintain natural vegetation, taste, parks, is that the Parks Commission? We're getting into more quality.
We're talking about, we're talking about homeowners being required to have a green belt between the lake and their yard.
So this will go to zoning, and it could, you could task, uh, like the watershed council to assist you with that? As far as like.
So it'd be county zoning? Okay. Same way with support, strengthen groundwater protection, stormwater management. Regulations in the county zoning ordinance, so the county's gonna need to come up with these zoning ordinances. Uh, promote regulations developed, deeply stop, look at, I'm going too fast there, closing control, that's, I mean, that's not the township or.
That's county.
That's a county zoning again, or the health department, encourage plant native trees, I mean, that's not us. That's BLPA and MAPS.
Yeah, they're doing it.
Yeah, MAPS and BLPA encourage, you know, planting the native trees and same way with the forest lands. Pursue grant funding, this work, we got five minutes, guys, so that's.
DNR was.
DNR?
DNR Forest.
All right, DNR.
They're already doing it.
Pursue grant funding, this is protecting national, natural areas, that's something that I would think, uh.
And, and the conservancy.
Yeah, little traverse.
I don't know that we can designate them.
No.
They're part of our.
We can, I, I would say NA, can we say NA?
As a, as a board or as a governmental body, you can encourage these things to, to other groups that are actually involved doing it.
Okay.
If these are important issues to you.
Yeah, they are. So, so we put conservancy there?
Tip of the met, how about tip of the met?
To be determined.
Yeah.
But those are, but if these are terms of you, you should have.
Tip of the met is who we would, we would encourage, just like Burt Lake Preservation and probably MAPS who's waiting to come in there would, uh, would both encourage them too, so, okay. I think we're through it all. Okay. We reviewed the master plan, Doug, do you have anything to add to it before we?
Now, unless you have any questions for me, Gary.
Well, I think Doug.
Think about if there's other changes or.
Yeah, I think.
If you wanna, again, go through this on your own time, think of something that, hey, we might wanna add this or that.
We have to, and we have to go through five anyway.
Yeah, so we'll have a meeting in the next couple of weeks to go through five, and we can review this again.
Okay.
And then, if there's any question, we'll send it back to you then.
Absolutely.
I think we got through it pretty quickly, um, I think we had some good responses.
Let us know when that next meeting's gonna be, as early as you can, because that way we can get it on our books.
Okay. Okay, we will do that, so, um, okay, public comment.
Yeah, where do I go?
Uh, we got, we got a couple of minutes, guys, so.
I can do it in a couple of minutes.
Go ahead, do it right from there.
All right, well, I wanna talk about short-term rentals, I'm gonna quote from the Burt Lake Preservation Association. Without regulation, short-term rentals potentially threaten the fabric of our neighborhoods. While the majority of short-term rentals pose no problem, a growing number are causing disruptions like septic and so on. Um, I do wanna say that with the master plan, over 50% of residents and, you know, people that enjoy Indian River want some kind of rules and regulations for short-term rentals. This is what I would like to see done, um, for the safety and the character of our community, to limit the number in an area. I have four in a row behind me, they are four right next to each other, I have two across the street. Um, I really think you should put a pause like other counties have done, um, on any new ones, because we have, the numbers are just unbelievable how many we have here. Um, they do need to register with their name, they come, they clean, they buy these places, clean them up and leave, you don't see them again. You know, um, if, if they give their name and register and pay a fee, it makes them more accountable to take care of it, you can get them on site to, if they're, you know, you know where they are, so you can take care of problems. Um, so I really think they do need to register and they do need to pay a fee, um, you need to have inspections for, um, fire, and they need to have smoke detectors that are working and CO2 detectors. Um, also, another issue is, some of these people are buying and they homestead, and, uh, they're, you know, doing the homestead exceptions, and they aren't, um, living there, and what happened to the Cascade Township ordinance that you guys were looking at to try to, um, come up with your own?
We, I think I told you before, just go back to you, it's gonna take time to go through, we have to get through our master plan.
We can't keep putting it on the backboard, which has been happening, um, you know, this, this, when Burt Lake was talking about it, Preservation Association, which I'm a member of, that was in, uh, winter of 2021.
Yeah, I'm on the board.
Yes, I know.
I'm the treasurer, so I know, so, again, like I told you, I had an email this winter, it's, we gotta walk before we can run with this stuff. This is something that we talked about, even the board has talked about it, I mean, it's something that we gotta get through the master plan first. And that should be by the end of the summer, I would hope we would be able to finish that, then we can take a look at if and how we do short-term rentals, it's a political thing, you know, go ahead, Bob.
I know, we're not supposed to respond about the public.
I know.
Yeah, but we should finish public comments and then do work.
Well, sure, three minutes are up, so we gotta get out of here, so I'm sorry, I'm sure you do.
Two hours.
I'm sorry, but we have a minute, I'm sorry, we have a, we had it till seven o'clock.
He's trying to cut yours short.
We have four rentals in front of us.
I understand, okay.
No, you don't.
I have four in my street, sir.
We have four looking out our front.
Okay, I know your problems.
Where are you at?
Witten Holden. Witten Holden.
Go ahead.
I need 10 seconds.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
To look at limiting the number of people per house, and two, I ask you to get them to pull their garbage containers in after their garbage is picked up, those two issues are, two big items, thank you very much.
Okay.
And you're taking a home that they now have really turned into a business, and if you charge $400 on each of those homes, there's some money that go with those.
That's less than one night rental, that's yours.
You're speaking to the choir, I mean, it's.
Who's gonna do all this, who's gonna reach?
There's a lot of money to be made here, so that's why it's hard to.
The township.
You're gonna have lawsuits, I mean, it's not easy, and we always have, we have somebody who works for him.
I'm sorry, many, many townships have adopted whole lakes, if you really looked into it, I'm not saying that that would be what we would adopt, but they're all having had problems, a lot of them have adopted rules and regulations and put curtailed. When you got a house with a garage house that says that they can sleep 18, 20 people.
I know.
I have a problem with.
Most kids.
It's a fire hazard, for one thing.
It's not safe for us.
I.
So.
And we've been, I've been coming here for 60 years.
I, I've been coming here since I was five years old, and I'm gonna be 65 in a few months, so.
Can you at least tell us to call for garbage containers to get put away?
Call me and I'll, I'll apply complaint with the police, actually call the police.
No, he put up, he put up.
You know, just.
He put up wood slatted that the containers sit in all the time.
I'll talk to me after.
24/7.
Talk to me after.
You know, Burt Lake Preservation, we can't regulate, we did give suggestions, we recall, to do this, the first thing we said is to talk to the owners first, try and work it out first, give a phone number, I can't, we don't have time to go through all that tonight, but at our next meeting, we're gonna have in a couple of weeks, we can talk a little more on that. Oh, no, I brought it up if you listened.
It's not on the way.
Respond to your comment, the, the fence, is that in the property 10 feet from the lot line, or is it?
No, it's on the road.
Okay, but it's, it's on, it's on, in the road right away.
That's right on the road.
Or it's on their property, but is it? Is the fence a J set to your property? Cause they have to be a certain distance off, it's not on the lot line.
It's right off, no, it's center of the lodge, but it's right on the road.
You can't just, just drive the vehicle.
They live in there.
No, I was just, I'm asking a question.
Thanks, Doug.
To figure out.
See what you started?
Who to call to take care of the problem for you, so that's where I'm asking the question.
Okay.
So actually, so NMCAT, Denise had suggested when we talked about, when we talked about short-term rentals and ordinances, et cetera. She said they, she had just finished this thing with Prescale Township, where they got the short-term rental owners and the people all together, and they hammered out an ordinance that everybody, I mean, you're not gonna make everybody happy, right?
Oh, no.
But every.
And they're not gonna go away.
No.
Every, every, if you go between the rivers and every owner, it's about the soul. Pretty much, it's turned into a wreck.
I, I know.
And all I was calling you.
I feel your pain, I have quite a, I live on Plumeth Beach, and we get four and five, and one guy sleeps 20, so I know, that's why I'm.
Where are you?
Yeah, you had something to say.
I will defer to the Nest Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you, Pat. So, anybody, board, any comments?
Oh, wait.
She has a comment.
Oh, no, not you. I'm sorry, Beth, go ahead.
And I don't know, you guys or the DDA I'm supposed to talk to, what's going on with Pant and Gary's, are they coming back?
Yes.
Yes.
I can tell you all about that.
They've already put in a site plan.
The site plan is gonna be reviewed the seventh. Yeah, the seventh is being reviewed.
Coming back, I mean, I'm hearing horror stories.
Oh, no, no, these all said.
They've already filed a site plan and, and.
We approved it, I just sent an email to.
It's a replacement for what they had.
From us.
It was already before the county.
That's right to them, they're gonna decide what they're gonna.
Yeah, we already gave our.
The public hearing on the.
Yeah.
On the seventh, they're in the public hearing.
It will be, it will be rebuilt.
Okay, yeah, so it's coming. Okay, any board comments?
I used to have a picture where they're.
Commission, okay, I make a motion, we adjourn the meeting, and we'll, we'll get together in another couple of weeks to finish it. Huh? I don't know, they're.